We need roll call, Darcy.
Commissioner Pack.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens?
Here.
Commissioner Lopes?
Here.
Commissioner Midah?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Present.
Commissioner Moss?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Present.
And we do not have Commissioner Wilson yet.
Thank you. Okay, now is time for public comment. This is an opportunity for attendees to provide comment on an issue of concern. The Planning Commission, unless that I, to the Planning Commission, unless that item on the agenda for a public hearing. Testimony regarding file ZDO 288 related to public utility facilities, including the potential impact to PG's proposed Stafford area transmission line is closed. Oral testimony concluded on April 8th. And the written record closed on May 6th. An additional opportunity to testify will be provided by the Board of County Commissioners Hearing, currently scheduled for June 12th at 10:00 a.m. Written testimony received after May 6th will be provided to the board. If there is anyone in attendance who would like to provide comment on something other than utility facilities on the Stafford area transmission line, please use the raise hand feature now. Do we have anyone, Darcy?
I don't see any.
Okay. Public hearing is now open for the Planning Commission deliberation and decision on file ZDO 288, a legislative proposal to amend Clackamas County zoning and development ordinance, and potentially the Clackamas County Comprehensive Plan. This item is continued from April 8th, 2024, when a staff report was presented and public testimony was taken. Assisting us today in the hearing are several members of the county staff. Principal Planner, Joy Fields. Planning Director, Jennifer Hughes. Administrative Specialist, Darcy Renhart. This public hearing is being conducted virtually using the Zoom platform. Panelists for today's hearing, which include members of the Planning Commission, county staff, have both audio and video capability. If a panelist is participating with audio but not video, members of the audience will not see that panelist's name on their screen, but will be able to hear them when they speak. Today's hearing is being recorded as required by law. The county will make every effort to post the recording on the county website as soon as possible. The Planning Commission is charged with making a recommendation on the legislative amendment proposed to the Board of County Commissioners. The record from this hearing will be forwarded to the board, which will make the final decision on the matter. The board will conduct another hearing on the application currently scheduled for June 12th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. That hearing will be, meaning that the hearing will be started anew and additional testimony may be offered. Tonight's hearing will not go beyond 10:00 p.m. unless the majority of the Planning Commissioners in attendance vote to continue past that time. If not concluded, it will be continued to a date and time certain. The planning may be continued, the hearing may be continued for other reasons as well. If an announcement of an additional hearing date and time is made tonight, it will be the only notice given that that, of that additional hearing. The planning and zoning staff prepared a memo in response to questions and concerns discussing the Planning Commission during the last hearing. Staff will now summarize the me, memo and present some photographs that may assist the Planning Commission in its deliberations. Jennifer, take it away.
Joy is going to actually share her PowerPoint. And again, this is really, it's not a full staff report. There were some specific questions that the Planning Commission asked at the meeting on April 8th. And this is a kind of a, first of all, a little bit of a reminder of where we are in the process, and then a discussion of the issues that you asked us to look into. Joy is gonna give the PowerPoint, and then I will make some comments at the end, just kind of some thoughts about how you might frame your discussion and sort of reminding you what all the different options are that you actually have in making your recommendation to the board.
All right, I assume that is my cue to take it from here.
That's your cue, sorry.
No, that's okay. So as Chair Murf said in the introduction, we are here tonight for the continuance of the public hearing for deliberation and decision only. Testimony has been received and public written testimony closed last week. The Planning Commission has been given the testimony that was received before 4:00 p.m. on May 6th, and that was provided last week. The Board of County Commissioners have a hearing scheduled for June 12th at 10:00 a.m., as Chair Murf mentioned. However, be aware that the hearing date may change. And this hearing will be an opportunity for additional public testimony. So for those audience members that are in attendance tonight, if you want to talk specifically on these proposed amendments or provide written testimony, you can do so, and the Board of County Commissioners will receive that, as well as all other testimony that has been received to date. A little background on how we got here tonight. In November, the Board of County Commissioners initiated the zoning code amendments related to utility facilities. And the Planning Commission held a study session to understand what these initiated zoning code amendments may include. And there was great discussion about what utility facilities are. And then April 8th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and received testimony regarding the proposed zoning code amendments. Those proposed amendments include definitions of utility facility, definitions of utility line, and a definition of a utility service line to identify the differences between those type of facilities and what they serve and what functions they have for development in Clackamas County and residents in Clackamas County. The proposed amendments also aim to clarify requirements for undergrounding utility lines. And in those areas of the zoning code where underground utility lines is required, it is in conjunction with other development in a, in a subdivision or commercial development scenario and often include sidewalks and streetlights. And so it's our understanding that those utility facilities are those service lines that serve individual homes. Additionally, in most zones, these proposed amendments would have all utilities inside the right-of-way be a primary use, and all utility lines, both above and below ground, outside of the road right-of-way, be a primary use. Other utility facilities would remain a conditional use. It's important to note that the proposed amendments make no changes to the farm and forest zones because they are governed by state law, and utility service lines would still be an accessory use in developments. During the public hearing in April, there were a few issues that came up during the discussion. And the Planning Commission requested that staff do additional research and get more information. And after reviewing the Public Utility Commission's website and talking to staff with the Public Utility Commission, staff, planning staff have an understanding that public input for individual utility projects is only required by the Public Utility Commission when a certificate of public convenience and necessity is requested by the commission. And so that, that's when the utility provider would engage the public in areas where they need to condemn property for a specific utility project, or get public buy-in for a very specific utility project to ensure that environmental justice is, is met. The staff of the Public Utility Commission provided information for the Planning Commission to review and consider, and that's in Exhibit 15 of the packet that was sent out last week to the, to the Planning Commissioners. Additionally, last month, the Planning Commission requested more information on stormwater infrastructure. And so we wanted to provide you with background information as well as examples of what we see on a regular basis in the planning department. So stormwater is similar to a sanitary sewer system in that it is captured and conveyed from a house or a impervious surface in the case of stormwater. This is often conveyed under the road. The stormwater utility is often conveyed under the roads, similar to sewer. And you'll see public utility easements and sewer line easements following roads throughout development in Clackamas County. What's different between stormwater and sanitary sewer is that stormwater is often conveyed to a detention pond, and then it is sent to a waterway. And during the detention, the pollutants like nitrogen and phosphorus and maybe some garbage and other things drop out and are, are removed before it goes into the waterway. The detention ponds are often vegetated and don't include large structures outside of an outfall. This is different than a sanitary sewer system that has large treatment facilities that use, uses processes and other methods of cleaning what goes down our sewer drains. In the planning world, we often see stormwater detention ponds that capture the stormwater before it is sent to a receiving stream in, in the land use process for reviewing the proposed development. This is an example where an easement in the development is granted in the, in the final plat for pedestrian access, waterline, and sanitary sewer. And then you'll see that there is a tract that is granted for storm detention. And it is granted to Clackamas County Water Environmental Services for stormwater detention. And it serves the entire development. And that stormwater detention is off, is reviewed through land use processes. And you'll see an example here of a land use application that we reviewed recently, where on the left of the screen and the right of the screen, there are proposed stormwater easements that lead to the stormwater facility, such as the detention pond. These storm sewer easements are not under the road. In many developments, sewer systems and sewer easements are also not always under the road. And in these circumstances, these easements carry these utilities and serve more than one lot. And so it's not necessarily an accessory use. And so in this case, for stormwater and for sewer, these utility easements and utility facilities that we would define as utility lines are serving more than one house or more than one commercial structure, and so aren't an accessory use, but are underground and are essential to provide the utilities for this development. Just so you have an idea of what these look like on the ground, these are stormwater infrastructure examples. On the left, there is a stormwater drain in the right-of-way. And on the top right, you'll see the, the long grass-like rushes. That is a stormwater detention facility that's in the right-of-way. However, the bottom right is a stormwater detention facility that is outside of the right-of-way that's vegetated and was reviewed during a land use process. The structure in the middle there is the outfall structure that reduces flooding and keeps the stormwater from going over the street after a heavy rainstorm. And the outfall would lead to the, the closest waterway or the drainage way that receives the stormwater. So these types of infrastructure are not always in the right-of-way, which is why the Planning Commission requested for more information on stormwater. And as you saw in the memo, staff proposed a couple of ways of addressing this. And I do want to make note that when we're talking about utility lines that serve multiple points and are above and beyond what a service line is, there are examples of water lines and sewer lines also being above ground. So stormwater is not the only conveyance system that may have above-ground visible infrastructure. On Slide 2, there was an example of a pipe underneath a bridge that carried either sewer or water and is part of an overall underground system. But there are times where even underground utility lines get above ground and become visible. When we had our meeting or public hearing last month, the Planning Commission also asked for additional information on when power lines were not allowed to be underground, when they were service lines, when they were servicing a, a specific home or specific development. And staff reached out to the PGE, and they provided an exhibit that is in your packet. And staff also found that PGE follows guidance from a lot of regulatory entities, including the Public Utility Commission that we talked about earlier, that reviews safety for projects, as well as OSHA and the National Electric Code and the, the National Building Code and Oregon Specialty Code. And all of these are part of the Oregon Joint Use Association that provides guidance documents to help utilities go through the regulatory information that they have for clearances and, and safety provisions that they have to provide. Additionally, last month, we talked about the Comprehensive Plan and policies to address undergrounding of utility service lines. And the Planning Commission identified that they wanted to do more and wanted to advocate for the placement of electrical lines underground. And so staff have compiled a draft policy to address that, that desire by the Planning Commission. And you can see it on your screen here, and it is to support and facilitate the placement of electrical lines underground to increase infrastructure resiliency and promote wildfire mitigation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to say all the extra things that she wants to add to the PowerPoint, and then open it up for questions.
So I want to talk just a little bit about maybe sort of framing the discussion a little bit. So first, I do want to clarify, Joy covered it, but just so we've summarized this, the staff's recommendation is adoption of what you reviewed at your last hearing with a couple of changes, both of which were just covered in Joy's report, one being, and they're in your memo in more detail, but a couple of changes related to stormwater infrastructure to add something that's a little more expansive in terms of accessory uses because some of these facilities are not utility lines. They're those detention ponds, which can be sitting, you know, on a particular commercial property, draining a particular development, or say, an apartment complex, something like that. In that case, we want to clarify that that would be an accessory use, just part of that particular development. Also suggesting a change to the definition of utility line to include drainage waves. So it's clear that we are talking potentially about something that's sort of natural, or, or maybe it was natural at one point, and it's been somewhat altered by man over time, but, but it is a different type of utility line conveying stormwater. So we'd suggest those couple of edits, and then that the Planning Commission consider, along with all the other things you're going to consider tonight, how you want to deal with other types of stormwater infrastructure that, that might be like Joy mentioned, something like a detention facility that's serving an entire subdivision or an area that's had maybe drainage issues, and a provider is proposing a new facility to kind of address those drainage, drainage issues in the area. So that's kind of a policy, policy discussion for you to have, but we might need to make some edits with, you know, that would, would cover that as well. And then the second change we're recommending, we talked about amending some comp plan policies last time, and so we got a little more specific this time in the recommendation, in addition to adding the word "service" to clarify that the lines we're talking about being underground are service lines. That's the proposal, and it's what's been implemented over the years. And then also this, the policy that Joy just showed you, if you do want to have something that gets that sort of greater advocacy-type role for these, for undergrounding power lines, we could add something to that effect. So that's our recommendation, changes to the stormwater provisions and changes to the comp plan provisions in addition to what we recommended before. As far as, I wanted to mention for the audience in particular, the board's calendar is pretty challenging this time of year and into June, based upon the various budget commitments that they have related to the adoption of the new budget. It is possible that the hearing that they have currently scheduled for June 12th at 10:00 a.m. will be moved. If it is, it's likely that they will, will open the hearing and then continue it. That's my assumption of what will happen. Staff will reach out to anybody who has previously submitted written testimony, even if it was after May 6th. If you've been part of this process, we'll be letting you know. If a new date is set, and it's not going to happen on June 12th, if we know that in advance, we will certainly let you know. And you can also, of course, check the, the Board of County Commissioners has a webpage for land use items. You can check there, can also reach out to me, to Darcy Renhart, or to Joy Fields if you have questions. That date is coming up pretty quickly, but anyway, I just didn't want people to think that it was 100% for sure going to happen that morning because it may get moved. And then in terms of framing the discussion, so I've offered you kind of a matrix that might be useful for the Planning Commission to consider in your discussions tonight. You're certainly not obligated to use that, but I wanted to kind of offer it as a starting point. It may not be that you need to talk about every box, but it's got like some general themes of all the different sort of types of facilities that we've been talking about and that are encompassed by these proposed amendments. So it might be a useful place to start to see if maybe there's some agreement on certain things, and there's areas where there's maybe more sticking points or more discussion might help you focus the conversation. I've also been noticing, and I, I really kind of want to clarify this again for the audience in the testimony, and not just what the Planning Commission received, but some of what's been coming in over the last week, that there does seem to be some confusion, and to the extent that staff was responsible for that, I want to apologize. I think that there's maybe a belief that, that staff has said something we have not said. And so to be clear, planning staff working on this, it's me and Joy Fields, and I do not believe that either one of us have, have ever said that these code amendments have nothing to do with the PGE transmission facility in Stafford. That is not the case. What we have said is that the decision that's being made, or the recommendation that's being made by the Planning Commission, and that the board will be making, is not limited to that facility and is not a specific decision about any one specific proposal. What it would do is generally change our code. And to the extent that those code amendments affect a project of any utility provider, including PGE, they will absolutely be applicable to those, you know, to those projects in the future. And I do believe that's what we have said, but there seems to be some understanding that maybe we've been trying to hide that or have said something different. And I just want to be clear that that is certainly not our intent. And I guess that leads to kind of a larger point for the Commission to consider, and that is that this package, it's been challenging because they are what I believe to be very necessary amendments to our code for it to remain functional. And they are happening against a backdrop of a very specific proposal that is understandably upsetting to certain people who live in the Stafford area, which, which I don't want to ignore. But what I want to say to the Planning Commission is this is not an all-or-nothing recommendation. You do not need to recommend to the board approval of every element or denial of every element. You can find something in between. And when I'm saying there are 2,000 utility permits, there are not 2,000 utility permits for overhead transmission lines. So that was what I was hoping that, you know, sort of Joy's examples would show you. And that is utilities are entering our system, are, are being proposed in a myriad of ways. They come in with, you know, individual building permits associated with utilities. They come in with land use applications for design review, conditional use subdivisions, where they are building out necessary infrastructure, infrastructure that's actually required by the county to build those developments. And yet this sort of interpretation, this new analysis of our code suggests that maybe even those could require a conditional use permit. I mean, I don't, that wouldn't be the argument I would make, but arguably, that might be the case. We've got existing facilities out there that are occasionally replaced or upgraded to meet new safety standards. We've got PGE doing wildfire mitigation work on existing lines to make them safer. Standards have changed. The poles may need to be a little higher. They may need to be metal instead of wood. Should every one of those things require a conditional use permit or an alteration of potentially a non-conforming use? That's really what's before you, is the scope of the needed review for all of these different types of facilities. And so, you know, just, I'll, I'll leave you with that, that I think that that's, that's kind of where I would hope you would, you know, sort of take your discussion and sort of consider these different types and, and look for areas of alignment maybe first by using that matrix. And with that, staff will take questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Joy. I do want to mention that we are going to use the raise hand method. Raise, and I will call on you to ask questions of staff. I see one hand up right now. Tammy?
Oh, thank you, Chair Murf. Joy, would you mind going back to your presentation and just the, the, not the last slide, but the one just prior to that? I, I just want to make sure I understand that proposed verbiage. Yes, okay. So what does it mean? Increase infrastructure resiliency. What does resiliency in that capacity mean exactly?
Maybe I should take this one because I, I drafted this. I mean, to me, resiliency means the ability to withstand bad things that might happen and/or recover from those bad things more quickly. So it could be anything. It could be wildfire, although we've talked about that. That's also mentioned here specifically, but it could be ice storms, could be an earthquake, any of the above.
Fabulous. Thank you, Jennifer. That helps a whole bunch. I really, two, two things real quick. Fabulous. Thank you, Jennifer. That helps a whole bunch. Um. I really, two, two things real quick. Phenomenal response packet. You guys caught everything we'd asked about and responded just really, really well. I read the entire packet and. Just felt that um our questions were addressed thoroughly. So thank you 100%. The other thing is one, one, I don't know if it was in this packet. No, I think it was actually in the additional exhibits. The letter from PGE about, I didn't even think about some of the real challenges when you've got lines underground. Number one, they don't last anywhere near as long as lines. Above ground, and I would not have thought of that. I I assume they lasted longer because they're underground and protected and. You don't have all of the elements beating on them when they're underground. So that was interesting. And the second thing that they mentioned was, you know, storms can cause real serious problems with underground like a tree goes over and the. Roots pop up the lines. And not only is that really difficult to fix and take a lot more time. So, you know, underground isn't certainly the be all end all, but. I thought PG's response and education in that area helped me understand why some of these. High-powered stuff isn't underground because wow, that would be. Very dangerous. So thank you again. Well done, Joy and Jennifer. I appreciate it. And thank you for clarifying our purpose here tonight.
Thank you, Tammy. I don't see any other hands up. Uh. Should I go one by one? Tom Peterson. Would you have a comment?
Excuse me, Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner Pack has her hand up.
I'm sorry.
I snuck in a hand right, right after you said that. Sorry about that, Chair Murph. So I echoed Commissioner Stevenson's comment about. Staff response to our meeting in April. I really. I was, I I think I was the one that was most vocal about the stormwater facilities, and I think you guys did a really. Great job of identifying that potential changes because. For all of those facilities to go through conditional use. Permit process would be not the best use of anybody's time, including staff time for reviewing. So. Thank you, Joy and Jennifer for doing your research. And Joy, you did a phenomenal job of explaining stormwater facilities for someone that's not a. Engineer that deals with that on a day in and day out basis. So good, good for you. The one question that I had was on the. Comments that were provided by. I'm looking Randy Randall Yamada. Want to exhibit 16. Page, many, many pages, and it's about halfway in that. It looked like he provided some potential solutions to language, but. It 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 looked like it was a screenshot cut or something and. The information didn't quite come through, and I didn't know if there was. If if you had full information or whether this was all that Mr. Yamada provided feedback on.
Mr. Yamada attached the draft amendments um to his email. But it was the draft that staff had written. There was no indication that the proposed language that they were proposing was included in the 108 page. Document of the draft amendments. And so I thought it was important that you get the email because I think it. The the 108-page attachment was just what we have in our website.
Yeah, so so it looked like he was trying to provide changes, changed line or language of modification. But it just, it goes and then it stops because he didn't. Do the whole full screen capture. So it was really difficult to understand. So you didn't get any more than this on the email. Okay. All right. Thank you.
So I wanted to clarify quickly, Chair Murphy, you were, I think, going to start calling on people. So. At the moment, this was just questions. It may be that nobody has questions for staff, in which case. You might want to, we could move on to the next section, and then it may be that you have a whole lot more hands come up. We'll see. I bet people have things to say.
Okay, we're moving on. We're moving on to uh. Discuss what we're going to be voting on. And I would like to ask for some help here. Do we want to use a matrix? That was provided by Jennifer. And that would be on page eight. And I think this would kind of simplify it. Um. As I dig around through some of the other ZDOs that we had looked at in the past, it's very similar to this. It's a fairly easy way to check this off. Did you find it?
So it looks like Commissioner Stevens has her hand up.
Yes.
I I did get that, get it, and I'm looking at it right now. I, okay, I guess what I was prepared for as far as deliberation and voting. Was the basic four amendments presented on page two of the. Today's write-up. The, you know, adopt the comp definition of utility facility, clarify the types of the utility lines, allow utility facilities and allow utility lines, da, da, da. It is. Are we going into this type? Do we need to go into this type of depth or? Um. I I guess I'm a little, tell us, tell, could you maybe describe how this would be helpful? That would help.
Sure. And it may not, it may be that you don't need it. It may be that you can certainly do exactly what you just suggested. Really, the matrix doesn't focus on the, it focuses more on the second. The third and fourth bullets, Tammy, rather than the first and second bullets on that page. I think if. Well, I'm going to back up. Okay, so the matrix itself was in case the commission was. Maybe in less, maybe there was less alignment or you weren't moving toward a motion on things like, because it's the. The proposal from staff is fairly broad, right? And so it might be that you feel differently about some utilities versus other utilities. Or that the bigger issue isn't inside the right of way or outside of the right of way, but it's above ground versus below ground. And so the idea was to kind of give you some different ways to sort of. Slice and dice these different factors that might lead you to saying. These things need conditional use permits. Still, we don't want to change that part, whereas these things we think could be just primary uses. But I'm not really sure where you all are in your thinking. It may not be necessary to break it down at this level of detail, but the matrix gives you the different types of utilities. In case you feel differently about the the different, different elements of infrastructure. And then. The first section is underground. And it's then it's location, right? Inside the right of way, inside a public utility easement adjacent to the right of way. I'll talk about that because I don't think we remember to highlight that. Or outside both the right of way or an adjacent public utility easement. Then it goes through the same factors above ground. Again, you might not not need to go to the that detail, but one thing I neglected to highlight was. The county does have a requirement for an eight-foot wide public utility easement adjacent to all county roads. So when somebody does new development and they're required to make frontage improvements. We require an eight-foot PUE and some of those examples that Joy showed of the different like subdivision plats, you could see that on the front of all the lots. So those are all sort of intentionally reserved for utilities. Now, not every road has exactly, I mean, our standards have changed over time, right? So we don't always have eight. Maybe we have less, maybe we don't have any, maybe we have more. But we are requiring eight. And so it was just kind of an I, a thought I had that if you were headed in the direction of. Feeling differently about things inside the right of way versus outside the right of way, you might want to factor in that while the right road right of way might be 50 feet wide. There could be eight feet on either side that's really reserved for utilities and maybe that ought to be encompassed in whatever you end up deciding.
May I continue, Chair Murph?
Yes, go ahead.
Do you, you know, I'm happy to start off the deliberation chain and maybe if I started off. We may end up wanting to do the matrix. Or we may say, no, I mean, we don't need that kind of detail. Asking us the size of pipe diameter is so beyond my pay scale. So I'm like terrified of those kinds of decisions. But is that all right with you, Chair?
Um. Yes, I probably have a little more background on that, and I was going to have. I was going to add some comments as we through that matrix, or we could do it just as you proposed. We could just.
Well, I can start it out, and if it looks like we really do need to get into the weeds of that, then great, and maybe we do, and maybe we don't, but. I mean, as you said, this is a huge. Ordinance change to get the arms around and. I feel like I've read everything we got, which was a challenge. The four amendments basically adopt a comprehensive definition of utility facility. I I don't know that any of us at the hearing. Felt that that was a problem to pass, and I think we all agreed on it. So I felt very good about the first one. Clarify the types of utility lines that in most cases must be underground. I thought some of the changes you proposed. Is is logical. It is what I would support to the Board of County Commissioners. You know, we have to bow to the experts, and if they can't put a certain size line underground, then they just can't. I mean, we can't dictate that. Allow utility facilities inside road right-of-ways as an outright permitted use. Again, my feeling was that we all agreed within a right of way. That made perfect sense. That's what they were created for. And so. It's really the fourth one that my deliberation would be to change that fourth one. And it and it is going to, my factoring of that. Stafford is playing into my decision. I will absolutely admit that. To see a real live example. Of when citizen involvement is not. Required for certain types of land use applications. This is a pretty horrific example of what happens when it's not. And so. I would like to change that fourth amendment to allow utility lines inside road right-of-way. Both underground and overhead as an outright permitted use, requiring. Utility lines outside road right-of-way, both underground and overhead, to secure a conditional use permit. And I don't know if that verbiage is good or or needs to be more clarified. I just don't feel, especially when Joy did the research. That you tell, what did you say on the first part that I had it underlined here? One second. It appears that the PUC has no requirement for a utility to conduct public outreach for a specific utility construction project. So. You know, there's no citizen involvement. You know, all these residents are out there on their own, and if they can afford to hire an attorney. Wonderful, but I I just think it's wrong. It's. Not what this county promotes with citizen involvement in land. And that's really all I have to say. I I don't know that I want to go or need to go into. Huge detail, but if the board or the commission wants to do that, I'm game. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tammy. Tom, two? You're muted. You're muted, Tom.
I apologize. Uh. Thank you. Chair Murphy, I couldn't agree with Tammy more. I think if there's a purpose to the planning commission. Its singular biggest purpose is is public input. And I even took the initiative to call the PUC myself and had some conversations, and it is absolutely the case that. Short of land use taking, there is no public input. And and the only review frankly of these projects is after the fact based on cost. So we can't even say. With any authority that PGE's assessment of appropriate costs or not is reviewed either. It's only reviewed when they ask for rate increases. And that's always after the fact. When it comes to the review of a specific project. So I think Tammy's absolutely right. I think in those areas outside of these right of ways. Or property that PGE otherwise controls. I think we need to at least allow for that public input. That's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you, Tom. Carrie?
Just for clarification, Tammy, are you saying that? The stormwater facilities that we just got to talking about, those would be requiring. Conditional use permit and outreach also, is that what, or are you just referring to the to the PGE lines?
And and these amendments, Carrie, did say lines, and and I really, I didn't think. To include in my deliberation because I knew you were going to be here. What we would recommend as a commission regarding, because it's definitely not my, you know, you're the expert, and so. I would look toward you on a specific like the stormwater, the best way. To voice that, but I do agree. We, there's no purpose to be putting all of those through this kind of process. But how we come up with that verbiage, we would have to, you know. Bow, tip our hats to the planning department to do that kind of thing.
And and what I thought the staff was recommending to address that issue was to. To find a utility line to include drainage way and and so on. So page three. Section B was the recommendation that staff was making. And I I would be in favor of. This record, this part of the recommendation, particularly to make sure that stormwater facilities are considered. As part of the utility. Definition that does not require, that is outright allowed within. Um. Within and outside and above and below right away. But I don't have specific language that I could offer to staff. I'm sure that you guys could come up with that.
Joy wants in for a sec. Go ahead, Joy.
Question about sewer then, is that diff? Because those are included in the utility lines that are often outside of the right of way.
So I can guarantee you that as a. Thirty-seven-year veteran of. Infrastructure management. No one will put sewer line in a place where it cannot be found. If it can be put somewhere else. Uh. None of the sewer engineers wants to put a sewer line above. On the, hang it on the bridge, for example. Well, actually, hang it on the bridge is better than going underwater. And you don't go underwater because of the DSL permits that are associated with. You know, it causes more damage to environment by going under river, for example. So. There are reasons why the sewer lines are hanging on the bridges, but other than that, there, you know. Most gravity system follows gravity, so you have to go with topography and. Gravity only goes in certain directions unless you're going to have pump stations, which the water and wastewater can have pump stations. But these are highly planned out and in an organized fashion. Stormwater facilities, we don't pump stormwater. So you will see much less. Well, you won't see any stormwater pumps unless you go down to Florida and there's Everglades are, you know, draining the. We're using the big pumps or or. Where you have drainage district where you're dealing with flooding issues to protect Columbia Slough and Airport up at. Columbia Slough Drain District. Most stormwater facility managers don't want any pump stations, and so I I would say that. I would include wastewater and drinking water as part of the utility lines that should be allowed. Within inside, outside, right away, adjacent, above and below ground. That's, that's what I would propose.
I think that's a very interesting proposal here because it's based on gravity. In many ways, shapes or forms. My neighborhood also has a pushpipe in it. It comes from a collection system and then pushes it three, four miles up to a treatment facility. And it crosses under a river, which is a horizontal bore, and it's an endangered species habitat. That means you have to. Go through a stack of permitting. Anyway, very good point, though. Carrie, Louise?
Yeah, thank you. Um. Just wanted to talk about the.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just wanted to talk about the addition that staff, uh, put the language in. Uh, says support and facilitate the placement of electrical lines underground to increase, increase. Um, infrastructure resiliency and promote wildfire mitigation. And I applaud the addition of that, although I'd like to make something more strong and specific. Um, change is hard, but the future ahead, I think warrants. Um, language that encourages undergrounding of all electrical lines. Unless absolutely not able to do so, like those real high power transmission lines, you know, the great big ones. So I know it's costly also, but the utility companies keep asking for increases. And we keep having problems during ice storms as well as wildfires. So I'm just trying to figure out if we can, um, you know, because it says it also underground placement of utility shall be encouraged. That's not specific to the power lines, but I'd just like to make it a little more. I don't know if we can make it mandatory, but I'd like to increase that. In other words, to get the electrical lines for the future, the change. That's how change happens. Sometimes change is hard, like say it's costly. But if you don't push for it, it's not gonna happen. So I'm more, anybody who has a suggestion about language that we can put in. Um, beyond what's there, this is a suggestion, I feel, but I'd like it to be stronger.
Thank you, Louise.
No, you're welcome.
Tom, two?
Excuse me, on Louise's point, uh, I do, I I don't know what the ordinance says. I don't know the language, but I know there are communities like, and these are cities, not counties, mind you. Uh, but for instance, Fort Collins, Colorado passed an ordinance nineteen eighty eight. That required all utilities to be subsurface. Um, I think they're like ninety nine percent or something and they have good reliability and and so on. And and of course, there was a lot of pushback at the time they they proposed it, but it has been placed since eighty eight. Um, and it's essentially along the lines of what Louise described. In other words, that they required from a date forward, all utilities to be subsurface. But I don't know what it says and I I don't know the details, but there is such a thing.
Thank you. Yeah, I've done a little research on the lines also. And um, I was playing with the idea with voltage over a certain voltage. It should be above ground, under a certain voltage, it should be below ground. Looking at, I looked at the state of Wisconsin, they were talking about a hundred and thirty eight kilowatt. Uh, maximum underground. Uh, and that was with a coating that did not require a uh. A fluid coolant and that was a XLPE line, uh, which is a uh. Polyethylene line, but I would see that deteriorating after a while and especially in our soil that is very corrosive. So I, I don't know that that is probably going too far. Okay, so I have some changes in wording uh, to be added. Um, Jennifer?
Oh, I'm just gonna weigh in on the sort of question or conversation about requiring, um. So we would be talking about requiring distribution or potentially transmission lines. At least in the electrical utility to be underground. I'm hearing some discussion of that maybe needing something some of you are interested in. Um, and otherwise, I suppose it would be like not allowing utility lines to run under the bridge like it showed on, you know. Um, joy, because that would mean going, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different issues here. And I'm not sure if we're primarily talking about electrical lines. I don't know if the county has that authority, maybe. Um, but I think the biggest key is we didn't propose that. And so I'm a little concerned, um, that that's like scope creep beyond what's proposed. I think that you could send, um, you know, as we always talk about, you could certainly. Indicate that you'd like the board to pursue that at some point or us to look into it more. Um, you know, the reason this under or, well, two things. The reason this undergrounding element was included was really because we think our code lacks a little clarity about what has to be underground. But I believe the best interpretation is it's only service lines. Um, you know, so I suppose we could just leave the lack of clarity and then let it play out. I wouldn't really recommend that, um, but I'm concerned about going so far as to say we're going to mandate undergrounding. Particularly with the ramifications that that has for ratepayers. Um, and then the other, um. Oh, the, I'm sorry, I just completely lost my other thought. I was gonna say something else about undergrounding. It'll come back to me, but anyway, just, I guess, just if that's something you want to do. I'll just leave you with the fact that we'll need to explore that after your recommendation. And might end up telling the board that we're not sure that we can really do that under this package. But you can sort of still frame it up for them.
Yes, I think that's kind of pushing it, uh, going in that direction that, um, but uh. Tom Peterson?
Well, uh, Jennifer, thanks for stealing my thunder because that's exactly what I was gonna say. That we were kind of getting off track here and kind of going above and beyond what we're being asked to do. Um, and so, uh. I I don't think that we won't even attempt to try to set those standards without, that's a whole other. Discussion and set of fact finding and everything before it even wanna make such a recommendation. Because it has such huge implications uh, to the utility and the ratepayers and all these other people. We'd be, we need to be careful going that route and trying to use this. These changes as a mechanism to do that is absolutely wrong. So we need to kind of focus on what's being proposed uh, today. Uh, I'm gonna play devil's advocate a little bit. Um, I'm frankly was fine the last time with where the staff's recommendations were. Uh, and I'm not, not convinced that that anything's changed significantly enough. Where we want to try to figure out where a conditional use. Uh, is applied and where it isn't. So uh, I'm fine with the original recommendation. Um, in this particular case, I feel even though there, there was no requirement for public outreach. The utility has been bending over backwards, trying their best to inform and and accommodate. The neighbors the best they, the best way they can within their limitations. I'm not sure putting a conditional use on that project isn't gonna change anything, to be perfectly honest. I'm not sure whether public pa- uh, public outreach process is gonna do any differently than what PGE has already done. Uh, short of telling them they can't put the lines in, which I don't think we have the authority to do. So I'm fine with with the original recommendations where I think we're getting uh. Getting into the weeds and try and trying to figure out where to draw the line, when it's conditional, when it's not. For these maybe one or two one-off opportunities i- isn't worth the the trouble. So that's, that's where I'm at on it.
Thank you, Tom, and your background, you're a retired engineer, if I remember right, so.
Well, I know, yeah, and I I have some good buddies in the utility business. So I know, I know a fair amount about what they're up against and what they, they're, they're dealing with as well. Not that I'm defending them necessarily, but I'm looking at it more from a practical perspective, my own personal opinion, so that's.
Yeah, because we're also talking gas lines, we're talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, but fiber optics, we're, they have to all go in specific. And if we put that kind of power underground, it has to be spaced apart. And it requires a uh, working area to where you can have excavators also access this. So it's gonna require more than eight feet uh, for high power lines to be underground. It would probably require twenty feet in right away, um, just for the power lines themselves, anyway.
Anyway, there's my two cents.
Thank you. Uh, Tammy?
Um, so hearing all of these, um, kind of going back to. Uh, uh, modifying the amendment number four. Uh, so if, I I mean, stormwater was brought up, so would we want conditional use on stormwater? No, obviously not all of them. What other items, uh, Joy brought up sewer? So looking at the matrix, water, sewer, stormwater, communications, power, natural gas. If we said anything outside of a right of way required conditional use. Which one of those doesn't make sense to require? Obviously stormwater. But what other ones would not make sense? I mean, is sewer one of them? I just want to make sure that, you know, maybe we should be using the matrix in order to, you know. Not to put anybody in a bind. And again, that's only if the commission recommends this. If they recommend something different, it would be moot. But I um, I I don't like blanket statements and we're not considering the details that, you know, Joy and Jennifer have brought forth.
Absolutely, and I think that this is a fantastic job that's workable for us and we can understand. Um, yes, I think the matrix right here would actually help. Um, in this particular case, um, inside the right of way, you know, would we uh, want to? Uh, would we have conditional use permits for water, sewer, stormwater, communications, power? I don't think so. So I think straight across the board on that. Uh, we would stay with what has been offered, adopt a comprehensive or, uh, excuse me. Clarify the types of allow the utility, allow utility facilities inside the right of way as an outright permitted use. Um, yeah, I, you know, there's no issue with that at all that I can see. Because that's exactly what that was proposed for. And I I would like to make a comment that Portland General Electric is taking part in the Mount Hood Corridor. Uh, wildfire partnership, which is formed uh, with HOA and uh, the CPOs. Um, and that's from Furwood Corner, which is Shorty's Corner to Wapanesha, which is up by Frog Lake. Uh, we meet once a month, we sit at the table, we had three uh. Portland General Electric representatives uh, last week and that sat with us to answer questions. They're a part of our community uh, in moving forward. So I want to say that we work as a community, we can come up with solutions. We're gonna have to give a little, we're gonna have to to take a little. So I, you know, we're working to shape our communities and that's most important. Okay, anyone else have anything to say? Okay, so what Tammy has proposed. As written, and we're going to change the bottom. Uh, the last one, allow utility lot, utility, utility lines both inside and outside the road. Road right of way, both underground and overhead as an outright permitted use. We want to change that to anything outside the right of way, uh, or any particular. Uh, utility line, linear lines. What are we, does anyone have any suggestions? We had Carrie bring up stormwater. Do we want to? Make note on that? Do we have language for that?
I'd like to clarify it. I got my hand up, so I'm gonna go ahead and jump in.
Yes, go for it.
Okay, so outside the right of way would mean we're breaking a, taking a utility line into a development. That needs a conditional use now too, even though the development would have uh, made uh. Made an application and all the utilities associated with that development would be addressed in that, in that development. So I, so kind of playing devil's advocate. Why would we require that a conditional use when it's already part of a development plan that's getting reviewed? So you'd have to be more, this is why I'm struggling with trying to define it. When is it outside the right of way we want to have a conditional use? And when is it outside the right, well, it's really okay then. So it's not as black and white as we'd like it to be. And that's why I'm struggling with it, trying to even go there.
Uh, just one, could I butt in on this, Tom?
Go ahead.
Ask Jennifer, it, would that fall under an accessory to the subdivision permit? Nope, it still has to cross the gray zone then, uh, that.
So, yeah, I mean, so accessory uses technically by definition have to be on the same. Um, lot as whatever use it's serving. And that's where you run into problems with sort of larger infrastructure that's serving a whole neighborhood or a whole commercial. Yeah, I mean, it, yeah, it's, it's difficult. And what's hard about this is that all of these utility systems are interconnected. And so become, well, you know, you have to connect this to something else and then that might have to be upside. You can kind of see how this can sort of snowball and I think that's what, that's what your conversation is highlighting is complex.
Carrie?
I was just gonna um, share a little bit of confusion on my part, similar to what Tom's experiencing, Tom Peterson. Um, I think if we change the definition to include utility, the stormwater drainage and the facilities. You know, the detention facilities that Joy talked about as you were suggesting. I'm, I think we can leave, as long as the utility definition is. To expand, is expanded to include those facilities. I'm actually perfectly fine with just adopting, um, recommending to adopt. The, the um, changes that were offered through the city or staff um, report of April eighth. So. I was thinking this was a much simpler discussion because we changed the definition. And we were allowing um, projects to move forward without conditional approval. So that was where I was coming from. And if that's not the case, because I saw Tom shaking his head, so maybe I'm misunderstanding. I. I'm open to getting better information and.
Thank you. Uh, Louise?
Yeah, um, what I feel strongly about is that we require the conditional use permit. For um, power and natural gas outside the right of way. But if there's a brand new subdivision that's already going through a heavily permitted, reviewed process, they would be excluded. So in other words, I'm trying to focus on existing, you know, land, houses, et cetera, where they want to come in and change. And that's where I feel the uh, power and the natural gas outside the right of way needs the conditional use permit. To better incorporate citizen input. Because I feel like I'm a citizen and I think citizen advocacy is very important. And see, on the other side of that, we have a corporation. Uh, you know, I mean, let's face it, the nat- you know, natural gas company and the electric company, they're corporations. They're making a profit. And although their public relations part, you know, want to look as if they're dealing with citizen input. That's not their primary concern. So to advocate on behalf of citizens, I feel that for the power and the natural gas, which are both highly. Subject to explosives in the case of natural gas and then of course, fire with the power lines. That those should be conditional, you know, permitted when it's outside the right of way. And it's a, not a new subdivision where that's already part of the permitted process. I don't, again, it's a little awkward wording, but that's what I'm interested in.
Tom?
Yeah, I just want to follow up to Louise's comment. Um, so the question, I guess for my own benefit. Um, where would we have uh, power lines and gas lines that aren't in some right of way?
Are you asking me?
No, I'm just, just, I'm just hypothetically, I'm just trying to understand. Uh, transmission lines, they take out big swaths of li- land, they get permission or buy that land. For those, those, those power lines to go through. Uh, I don't know about gas, what uh, gas line, so that's more of a question in my mind. So but I, so I'm trying to understand how big of an issue do we have? With gas lines and, you know, electric lines that aren't in some form of a right of way.
Well, Tom, with the, all the exhibits and testimony, I I think an example of it is Stafford, is it not? Am I missing something here?
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand. What is it about Stafford Roads that's not a right of way?
Uh, Jennifer?
Yeah, I can, I can respond. There's a few different, I think a few different questions there. Um, about the Stafford project specifically, a lot of it will be in the right of way, but not all of it. So in some cases, they are needing to use easements outside the right of way. Which is a combination of willing, people willingly giving easements. And this potential condemnation of easements, which is why they're at the PUC. So it is a mix of inside and outside. I don't know the scope of how many facilities happen outside rights of way. Again, this has not been something that historically the planning department has really been involved in. Um, anecdotally, I can tell you certainly there are lines, both natural gas and um, electric lines that. Traverse, you know, acreage outside road rights of way. Traverse, you know, acreage outside road rights of way because that's what we're talking about really is road rights of way. Now they get easements for that, yes, they get easements, but we're what we're really talking about with this amendment is the difference between. Whether it's in a road right of way versus just cross country. I mean, it could be adjacent to the right of way, but sometimes they run, you know, they run.
I understand.
So yeah, we have some of that and some I will tell you just to throw another wrinkle into all this, when they're big enough. Um, a couple of things can happen, federal preemption, you know, we don't tell the BPA where they can put their lines. And um sometimes there the energy facility citing council gets involved, which is a state agency, which also sort of bypasses local land use. And that sometimes applies with large natural gas facilities. So there's a layered sort of, you know, we're not going to see all of them, no matter what we do.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add that uh these two particular utilities. Uh, have cannot go in the same ditch. They have to have a separation. But you can't have a backhoe accidentally bumping into a gas line while it's working on power. So they have to be separated at least at a residential uh lot. So uh it could. Gas could run with um, actually has to run alone if I remember right.
Hey Murph, if I could add that uh in my conversations with the PUC. Anytime there's a a taking of land, I mean, what we're only talking about is where PGE. Controls or otherwise owns the land, like in in a right of way, you could argue that they control that land. When there is a public taking of land, like and and this will apply, I think, in the Stafford project and maybe Jennifer, you can clarify. But anytime there's a public taking of land, there the PUC's hearings are very similar to ours. I mean, there's a ton of public input and notice and they do have an opportunity to object to the taking of their land. Not to the overall project necessarily, but there is a public process that otherwise doesn't apply, I think.
Yeah, that's my understanding um that there is an extra process. But as you correctly stated, it's really about the condemnation action. And if I understand correctly, it. If the utility gets a green light from the PUC that it meets their standards for condemnation, then they kind of take that to court. Like that's that goes then to us. There's a second step that comes after the fact. But yeah, that's that's my understanding.
That's what I was told, exactly.
Um, I just raised my hand. I didn't see anybody else. I just.
Go ahead.
Shoot in here. Um, but what about, I think I heard someone say that rather than condemn the land. Whole landowners can voluntarily allow the easement. In other words, so they're giving it. But that easement that they voluntarily give for the line to go through will then in fact affect other residents. So where does that factor in? I know about the condemnation because then there'll be a public hearing at the PUC. But what about the they agree to the easement?
Right, yeah, there's not um. And I mean, I suppose they could give it, but I think often what they're doing is selling it, of course. The you know, they're agreeing to an offer from the utility company for the easement right as opposed to saying I'm not going to. It it, you know, agree with you and therefore you have to condemn it. Um. But there is no, I I I I think that there's a distinction between. A sort of public, we'll call it a public process or an outreach process or consultation with property owners over I'm going to take or you're going to sell me this particular. Piece of ground to do something with, which is very different than what you're saying, I think Louise. And that is. Okay, so my neighbor agrees to let a a power pole and line go on their land. I didn't agree to that, but I still potentially have impacts from that. And that is not, I do not believe a consideration that I'm aware of. And I mean, I guess there's this sort of environmental justice component that Joy is talking about that's a little bit new at the PUC. But I don't think it really works like land use in the sense that they're gonna really evaluate. I mean, they look at safety. But I don't know that they're gonna look at the same things you would look at for a conditional use permit in terms of um impacts on an area.
I guess I was thinking more linear truly because these lines are going along. They're not just in one, usually it listens to direct line to your home or business. They're going along from property to property to property and along that, you know, the long line. Some landowners are gonna say, yeah, I fight it, you'll have to condemn it. Then another one will say, yeah, you can sell, I'll sell it, that's a good price and you'll get these differences. So I'm thinking that when it's that mixed up, you know, it should be a conditional, you know, for sure, everybody should have say, in other words, not just. The fact that's, are we, are you saying that because one person says it has to be condemned? Then the whole hearing will be on the whole line, say the line's fifteen miles long. Is it gonna be on the whole thing?
No, it's it's related as I understand it. It's targeted to the condemnation action. I mean, they do have to demonstrate need and you know, but I think it's much more site specific and they're not looking at the entire line.
Yeah, see, and that's where I feel that this should be because it impacts different people differently. That's why the conditional use permit, because again, you're having differences along this, say fifteen mile line or whatever it is. And I'm not talking about, again, those real giant transmission lines. I'm talking about lower voltage. Lines that transmit, but they're not that giant BPA thing.
I asked the specific question about.
Uh, could you uh off here? I have Tammy's hand up. I don't have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, Tammy.
Um. To muddy the water, because that's what it appears we're doing tonight, is I've heard people state, well, they can put the pole. In a right of way, but the lines go across private property that's not a right of way. And so. You know, I don't even know how much that's factored into, you know, you're looking out, you're looking at lines, even though maybe there's not a pole on your property. I don't know if that's a factor at all. Um, the other thing is. You know, in reading many of these notes from people that are going to be impacted. Um, I I had a lot of exactly the same questions that I thought, wow, if there was a conditional use process. These kinds of questions would at least get flushed out, like. Why are they going across residential? Why aren't they going down two two oh five or why aren't they going down I five or? And it and it could be this project or another project. It gives an opportunity. For explanation of, yep, you've been studying this and planning this for six years. Why weren't these ruways? Considered first above and beyond rural residential areas and. You know, just reading all of these notes about, you know, they have lots of questions and. Why do they have these questions if PGE has done this amazing outreach and answered all these questions? It doesn't appear that that's happened. So, you know, maybe they missed a meeting or something, I don't know. But there's a lot of good points in these exhibits. And these were many of the questions I had.
I probably had a little too much time. Um, because I was doing a little. Uh, backtracking uh back to ten twenty-three twenty-one. Um, ZDO eight three five. And this is over uh communications. We were pretty strict with zoning districts, heights, uh distance between cell towers. Um, we laid out that uh, you know, this is how it's going to be. Um, additional use permits were required in certain places. Um, this is something that I think uh. When I think that, we're being a little loose with this. Um, I don't know. I'd like to see consistency with this and I really don't want to, I'm not in any way, shape or form. Favoring taking away the people's voice uh as a citizen. I. That's the reason I'm here is because I open my mouth and I talk. I, you know, I had to make things simple and to move on and uh. With our future, yes, I'm all for it, but I think community has opportunity to form its own community. Um, anyway, if you have a chance, take a look at eight three five. Um, um, okay, so. Anything else? From anybody, anybody has have a suggestion other than what Tammy has offered? Or addition to what Tammy has offered for a motion?
I'm happy to put something in the form of a motion. But I want to make sure that if there are specific. Services that should be excluded, like stormwater, possibly like sewer, I want to make sure I have that in there and clear. Um, you know, Joy, can you tell me if we were looking at amending the Fourth Amendment? Um. What we should state, what would be appropriate for the future of Clackamas County and the planning department to exclude? Again, stormwater sewer, what would you recommend?
I would recommend considering uh the Commissioner Lopes's. Framing of it as what to require conditional use versus what to exclude.
Okay.
So what do you think needs a conditional use?
And and I think, I mean, I understood the power and the natural gas that made good sense to me. Would we going across private land want to have a conditional use permit on communications, stormwater, sewer? Water, I and I don't, I mean, I don't know. I just, it isn't for me about what the service is. It is, if it's not within a right of way, people have a right to be involved in the process. That's what this is about for me. So if we need to specifically exclude things like stormwater. I'm, I mean, I'm super happy to do that. Again, we always have to remember this is a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. However, Murph will be taking our message, so we want to make sure that message is as clear as a bell.
Yeah, because I only get five minutes to explain it, even if I have seven pages. Anyway, so.
So Joy, are you in agreement that that if we just said any um. Power, natural gas lines outside would require conditional use? Do does that make logical sense to you or?
No.
Okay.
But I am not a planning commissioner. I.
Okay.
I I don't uh particularly see. Why a power line that is less than a hundred kilowatt uh. Less than a hundred KV would require a conditional use because it's just like a telephone pole with a telephone line. And uh the the voltage is is low. Why would you require that to have a conditional use? Um.
Only because um there is no opportunity for sufficient involvement if it's outside of a right of way. And and that is the only reason I'm putting that forward.
Yep.
Here's here's my opinion.
Go ahead.
If you're going to start accepting or making exceptions for, well, this is okay. Uh, uh, but this isn't uh. We're kind of being a bit inconsistent. So to me, it's either all or none. Either you say, okay, we want to, anything that's outside of a right of way is conditional use, doesn't matter what it is. And anything that's in is is fine. But once you start trying to differentiate between the various utilities. There there always could be one utility, maybe how innocuous it may seem, that could be a big issue for the neighbors. That they're not getting an opportunity to comment on. So if our if our goal is to make sure the neighbors have neighbors. Are informed and that's what what I'm hearing is the general consensus, then it's got to be all or none. Either we just say, accept the original recommendation or we accept this proposal, but I don't think we want to start. Uh, getting into the weeds and and that's where it's going to get complicated for staff because you're going to be requiring. Conditional use for stuff that really isn't necessary. But you know, for that, but it'll, but at least for that one time, when it's a big deal, we got it covered. That's what we're doing. So that's my proposal.
Thank you for that, Tom. Tammy, you have a response on that?
Uh, Carrie.
I I was just gonna say, and I am not in favor of having conditional approval process for utilities. Um, so. That's my preference.
Thank you, Carrie. Tom, two?
Um, you know, it is simply the case that there is no regulatory approval. Of of any of these projects that are outside the right of ways and in a regulatory sense before it, there just isn't. Um, and if we put them on there, it, I agree, threading this needle is going to be very difficult. Having said that. It's hard to walk away from this meeting saying we're gonna propose an ordinance where there is no public input. On on potentially big power projects in their neighborhood. And that's what we are going to say tonight, probably. And that's what, you know, I get it. I mean, I understand that we're we're probably being charged with things that were, as someone said, above our pay grade here. But but it is hard as a commissioner to say, I I vote for not letting. Having public input in this case, in some of these odd circumstances. And they're very difficult to describe, I agree, but boy, the effort to describe them seems worthy and worthwhile anyway, so.
Okay, so, um, we can vote as is.
Chair Murphy, we got.
Excuse me?
Hands up here.
Oh, sorry. I I looked down for a second. Mr. Moss?
Thank you all. Tommy, you brought up a good point there. I don't think necessarily we're not saying. We're we're taking away anyone's public comment because at any point, anyone can comment. Comment about anything the county is doing, what utilities are doing. So I don't think we're we're at that point. I'm. I'm where Tom Pearson's original point that I think. I was fine with where we were at last time, so I agree with him. On the the policy scope, the policy is not within our scope. It's a planned commission. Policy really lies at the feet of the County Board of Commissioners and at the state legislative and the federal level, so that's not. Within our scope there, so. And and Tom was also right that, yeah, it's it's this proposal or the amendments, and I think we're going too far. Into the weeds here and it's not gonna. It's gonna get us anywhere, so that's where I'm at.
Hey. Okay, so keep this moving. Are we ready for a motion?
I'm happy to draft it and we can see what the cards like. Okay, um, I move to recommend approval of ZDO two eighty-eight to the Board of County Commissioners as recommended by staff. But with the following modifications. And under um amend, the four amendments approved, it would be to adopt the first three. And to modify the fourth to state, allow utility lines inside road right of way, both underground and overhead as an outright permitted use. Requiring utility lines outside road right of way, both underground and overhead to secure a conditional use permit. I'm willing to modify that if somebody wants to put something in about storm. But um I I do also agree with the comments about in the weeds. So that may be at a Board of County Commissioner level, but that is my motion.
Could you repeat the last part, please?
Yes, of course. Uh, the the how I would change number four. Allow utility lines inside road right of way, both underground and overhead as an outright permitted use. Requiring utility lines outside road right of way, both underground and overhead to secure a conditional use permit.
And these are lines going from facility to facility. This is not going into a home. These are not service lines. Correct. Jennifer?
So maybe just a couple of clarifications. Um, nothing in this proposal has suggested that's. That staff has made has suggested that service lines are under consideration to be treated any differently than they are now, which is that they're accessory uses. So. I'm assuming that that's not included. Um, and then in terms of clarification, you said staff recommendation. So would that include the changes to the comp plan, those minor edits and that additional policy as well as the storm drainage? Not whether a conditional use is required, but including drainage ways and the depth, all of that stuff we talked about tonight.
Yes, I didn't know how long to make that.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's great. I just want to be sure we know, depending on where this goes, what you're what you're intent.
I I what I heard was everybody was in support of those, so yes. And then I didn't, we need a second.
Oh. I'll second it.
Second by Louise?
Yep.
A vote?
Uh, oh, discussion.
Discussion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I'll go right down the, the road. Tom Midoff? Comment?
How, Jennifer, how, or maybe Joyce or somebody, how difficult, how burdensome is a conditional use permit? And I know that's a broad question, but.
Um, it's, well, I mean, I think it depends. If you are. Let's just say the average person wanting to do something on your property, it's about eight thousand dollars in four months. Plus a pre-application conference to begin and potentially, you know, a need to have consultants for various things, so it's a pretty big deal. For a large utility provider, probably not so much. But I think. The real question is that the number of these things, you know, and that depends upon. Again. This, you know, as, as, um, as moved, I would say it's a lot of conditional use permits.
Thank you.
Utility lines, yeah.
That's the, that's the salient answer right there, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a lot.
Any comments?
Oh, I'm. I'm good with Tammy's wording. Um, I'd like, of course, to maybe get too much into the weeds and. You know, do other things as people have expressed that that's out of our scope and, you know. Not appropriate, so anyway, I can live with that. I mean. Otherwise, I'd have to say if we didn't make that change, then I'd be against moving forward. So I can live just fine with Tammy's uh change.
Thank you, Carrie.
I, I, I am not in support of the motion. As I've stated before, I think conditionalist approval or permitting process for. The kind of utility improvements that the county needs. Is going to um result in a lot of work for very small gain.
Thank you, Carrie. Tom Peterson?
I'm where Carrie is.
Kevin?
I'm with Tom and Carrie.
Okay, so we can vote and figure out if there's four of you that will carry it.
That's right.
We shall vote. Could we please call the vote?
Commissioner Lopes?
Support, I.
Commissioner Midah?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Peterson?
I'm a no.
Commissioner Pack? Commissioner Moss?
No.
Commissioner Stevens?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
The nays have it.
Three in favor, four opposed.
Okay.
Do you want a new motion um? From someone else?
It just didn't work. It wouldn't be right for you to have to promote the next one.
No, thank you, but um would the planning department like to have a different motion and a different vote?
Oh, we, yeah, we want, I mean.
They need a decision.
Goal is always to get a recommendation. I will say as a technical matter. Um, and this won't, it's always such a weird provision of the bylaws. Technically, it will not be an official mo- uh, an official recommendation unless there are five votes for whatever it ultimately is. Cuz you have to have a quorum of the entire commission. Technically, we have vacancies, so I don't, I still think it's five, though, for it to be a majority. So, yeah, so you'll need five for it to be official, but the board still gets the minutes. So if it turns out that it's four to three, it'll still be something that they see. But, yeah, we, we would like to get to some sort of recommendation.
Jennifer, uh, if I could ask one more question, and you may not know the answer.
Sure.
If, if the motion were modified to include only gas and electric lines. Do you think that would have a significant impact on lessening the number of conditional you, use permits?
Yes, yes, I mean, I think it would, and I, you know, I guess I'll throw just a couple other things out there. I, I'm ki- I'm. I'm understanding what I'm hearing, sitting back and listening to this. So there's this public involvement component that's been raised as a concern. Um, there is the safety piece that's been raised as a concern related specifically to natural gas and electric lines. On the flip side, I did hear people say that maybe we didn't need to look at ones that were like in a subdivision. So that would be also one thing to maybe carve out, like if there's another land use approval that's already, you know, and we can, you don't have to draft it tonight. Um, but if they've already gotten a subdivision approval, then people have had a chance to weigh in on that, so that might be a carve out. And I guess the, I, I think it just depends. If the safety concern is what it is, then it may not matter to you whether it's underground or overhead. But that's another thing I haven't heard much about is, well, if it's outside the right of way, but they're trenching for a sewer line and they're gonna bury the thing. And it's in a, it's in an easement, I guess I'm not sure what the conditional use process is gonna do. Cuz at the end of the day, what you're really saying is we're gonna tell them they can't have the sewer line. Cuz there's not really anything to condition it on. You know, I mean, that's the thing. How are we gonna make the sewer line more palatable to the neighborhood? It's gonna be buried. So that's where I kind of get into this question of which impacts are we worried about? And if it's, and it feels like it's a combination of maybe it's some safety concerns about certain kinds of utilities. And then the impacts. That are associated with overhead. Power lines and tra- I mean, communications go on those as well. So it's that sort of where you're into the aesthetics and the vegetation room, the things that we've been hearing about Stafford. So maybe that's a way, again, I know you're saying not get in the weeds, but it might in fact be that we need to get in the weeds a little bit. And to kind of pull out the ones where you see that there are the issues. I don't know if that's gonna get you to. Four affirmative votes, but it's just kind of something to throw out there.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Tom. Thank you for the response, Jennifer, if that's, gives us something to think about here.
Well, I, I may have a new motion based on her answer. I don't know if this gets us anywhere, but. If I, I would move that, that. All other utility placements within right of ways, within property control are permitted as an outright use. But. That conditional you, use permits are required for gas and electric lines outside of the right of ways. Or property that is owned or controlled by the utility, which would include any easements they had already. Or any other property control that they might have. So I don't know if I said that very well, but. So conditional use permit requirements for gas and electric lines outside of right of ways or property owned or controlled by the utility.
Would we wanna add on the part about if it's a, a whole subdivision that's being planned and it's gonna get the review anyway?
And not subject to other land use approval processes.
Right, exactly, perfect.
So just to make Darcy's life easier. Can we, can we clarify, cuz I think what you're saying, Commissioner Midah, is. It's all of what Tammy said about the first three bullet points and staff changes and all that. But your motion is changing that fourth bullet differently than what she originally moved.
Yeah, I'm amending her amendment to the fourth amendment.
That's fine. It's technically a new motion, but I know what you said. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, any additions to that or any questions?
I will second Tom's motion.
Thank you. Questions?
So just for clarification, you're saying that electro- electrical and gas lines. Has to go through. Conditional permitting land use process unless they already have easement. Or unless they are part of the subdivision or, is that it?
Yeah, i- if it lies outside. What I, what I said, I don't know if this works, and Jennifer, please modify this or. You know, the, the language is, is, I certainly not my forte, but. But anything outside the right of way or property they control. So in those cases where, like, they were saying earlier in a subdivision. Where a public service easement is already built into the process, or there's a public service easement already there. Why have the public object to something that they already have the right to do? What we're talking about is, we're trying to, as someone said earlier, thread the needle and, and this was my attempt to do that.
So in essence, I think, um, just cuz I wanna make sure we've got a lot out there, um. It's a little like the way the PUC process works now, not that it would be the same process. But essentially, it would really only apply in situations where the utility doesn't already have an easement.
Exactly.
Which. I'm not saying it's not workable. It will be, I mean, the def- definitely narrows, um, you know, narrows the original proposal. So, or not our proposal, but the original motion.
I was just trying to think hypothetically, if, if, if. If there's a number of community objections and, and. There is property being taken. Then there's a public hearing at the public utility, but it still doesn't change anything about the project. At our level, it might. But at the PUC, it still would. And so I think the only way to do this where the public input has any meaning at all is kind of the way I described.
So maybe one point of clarification. You could, I don't know if this would happen, but you could have a line that is entirely. Like, it's new, it's new territory. We're gonna run this line three miles across Clackamas County. We don't have a single easement. We're gonna go condemn the whole thing. That could happen. I don't know if it will, but you also could have what the case is with the line we've been talking about. Wherein they have some easements, but not enough. So it's in and out and in and out. Do they need the conditional use permit for the entire line in that circumstance that's in our jurisdiction? Or just, I mean, you can imagine it's a little, like, we're gonna spot, you know what I'm saying?
It's a good question because the, the way I said it, it would only be for the property that didn't.
I'm just thinking from a procedural standpoint, it's gonna get a little messy and I wanna.
We are definitely in the weeds now.
Yeah, I wanna be able to accurately explain this to the board if, cuz we have to be able to do that, we have to understand it. So that's why I'm picking this apart just a little bit.
And Jennifer, if we. Utility right of way for, let's say, power lines, does that mean gas, water and sewer can all now use that newly, newly established? Of easement? That the PUC a- approved?
Um, I don't know enough about easements exactly, but I, I feel like it's being condemned for a specific purpose. Joyce nodding.
Only that.
I feel like that's likely, but don't quote us on it.
It depends on how the easement is worded, what else can occur. Whether a, a trail can be put on it, uh, is controlled with the language of the easement. And may be very specific to the utility condemning the easement.
As an old title guy, that's right.
That makes sense, yeah. Thank you, Joy.
I, I, I guess I'm still, um. I'm putting myself as the person who has to deliver these projects. My concern is that there is, I'm all for public. Um, feedback and comments, but my concern is that there, there can be and always, actually always is. That one person who's gonna be a holdout is gonna be, you know, if you ever saw the movie Up. Um, that one little beautiful house that's gonna sit in the middle of downtown New York where. They, for no reason at all, there's nothing that person is going to be happy for. Reasons that are not necessarily reasonable to any, you know, to the community. So I, I just, I don't know, and I would hate to see. Um, projects that are necessary to. For the community's well-being to get kiboshed or, you know, go through some huge gymnastics. Mental gymnastics and in and out of the scenario that Jennifer and Tom just talked about. Because of one or two um folks that just don't want the project to move forward with. So that's, that's what I'm, I'm trying to kind of rack my head in. How do we allow for um? Public input. And but, but leave out the unreasonableness. Um, factor uh engaged in these projects and, and I, I would like to hear.
May, may I, may I grab that a little bit?
Yeah.
In a community planning organization for twenty-six years. Um, citizen involvement is not citizen decision-making at all. It's a mere opportunity. To provide information to those impacted and give them a chance to participate in the process. To give input to the decision-makers, to ask questions that um, that they deserve answers to. It's a process of involvement, education, support. Referencing, I mean, I do this nearly every day and it's really just an opportunity to. Uh, so much of it is actually education. I do so much of that. Then it's how can you participate? And what I explain to my citizens at every meeting, we're not making decisions here. We're trying to get you up to speed so that we can provide the very best information to the planner. Who is going, or the hearings officer, who's gonna be making a decision on this. And then if the hearings officer says, uh, yeah, good go. I'm very sorry, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Jones, that you're unhappy, but um, this is the very best decision for this. It also gives uh the final step, which is an appeal process that does not exist and should. In my personal opinion, but. Uh, and does that help at all, Carrie? I don't mean to.
And, and I know that, you know, and I. I don't know if Tom was talking about this issue about the Tonkin line or not, but I do know that PGE went through. Public involvement process and, and some of the comments that were submitted were either, um. You know, they, they missed the participating, some of those, or they didn't, they didn't like, didn't hear what they wanted to hear. And therefore they didn't hear anything. Yeah, and, and I just feel like, um, I don't know, I just, I feel. Kind of caught in the middle where I would like public involvement, but I also want people to behave in a reasonable fashion. We don't always follow that, um, that route, but I, I appreciate your thoughts. That's.
Hard to manage those meetings. It takes. A lot of experience to do it cuz we get them. They're hard.
We get a vote?
I think it's time to call for the vote.
Yes, we had a second. It's time for a vote.
Commissioner Lopes?
Support, I.
Commissioner Pack?
I.
Commissioner Peterson?
No.
Commissioner Moss?
No.
Commissioner Midah?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
I think we have our five.
That is five. In support, two, no.
Well done.
Excellent.
Good job, Tom Two.
Thanks for listening.
Excellent.
I will say that, that this was probably the most difficult decision that I've made. And I really do hope that um people that are listening to or care to listen to this um hearing. Understand that we cannot be, um, we have to work with. Utilities, they are not the big bad monsters that some people would like to. Couch them as and, um. You know, I, I think we, we are always in favor of public comments. But not in ways of um some of the comments that have come through. And I hope people see that, um, that's probably not gonna get them very far if they continue to act that way, so. Be nice.
So, I.
I think we're done.
And I think we're done. It is been moved by Commissioner Tammy and.
Nope, nope.
By Tom. Tom Midoff, Tom Two, and second by Commissioner Tammy. And the vote was yay. Motion passes, public hearing is now closed. Hey, let's move on.
So I have a quick question, if that's okay, uh, Chair. About two eighty-five.
Yes.
Um, I think most of us do know that um it passed in its entirety. And I, I've actually received, I was really surprised the word got out so fast. But I'm, I've received a couple phone calls. But I'm, I've received a couple of phone calls and an email. And there's some unhappy people about that. They think it's the very wrong, wrong thing to do. And, and I kind of support them on it. I think it's a serious health and safety factor to live in an RV that gets mold and berman and they weren't built to do that, but you know, we're going to have to go forward. Um, two of the questions were, can this type of a hearing or, you know, uh, this is a legislative, correct? Can it be appealed to Luba? Oh, it can. Can it be appealed to Luba on just one piece like the RV? Cause I don't know how to answer them.
That's an excellent question.
Thank you.
So I guess first thing procedurally, the board has to adopt the written ordinance. There's nothing to appeal at this point.
Okay.
Um, they made an oral decision. So for those of you who maybe don't know yet, they had their hearing last week, um, on ZDO two eighty-five, which of course you'll all remember included the rural accessory dwelling units, the RVs, the second dwellings, and then a whole host of other kind of things that we needed to do that were mandatory to comply with state law primarily was what, what we were doing, a little bit of cleanup. So, um, it passed in its entirety, uh, three to two. Um, and so they will then come back and adopt a written ordinance, which is scheduled to happen on June sixth. And then, um, well, so from, from then there is, um, and of course you're going to ask me the amount. I think it's twenty-one days, um, for the appeal.
That sounds right.
To Luba. Um, and so if, yeah, as you have to have participated, there's still that requirement that, you know, the person or, or entity appealing had to have participated and it has to be appealed based on issues that were raised, you know, during the, um, testimony.
Standing on the specific RV topic then?
Uh, that's a good question. I would need to ask Caleb that. I'm, I'm a little unclear on that question of whether as long as the issues were raised by someone. So for instance, we have a hearing, I testify, I say these three things and then Joy testifies and she says two different things and I appeal it. Can I appeal on just what I said or also what Joy said? Um, I feel like it can be on any issues raised below, but.
I, I think only because of, um, of an appeal that's at Luba now. I had a conversation with somebody who said, no, we can only appeal on what we brought forward.
And that may be true. I'll, I can check that and just point of education for all of us, let you know the answer. Um, but I could think the other thing to remember is that when you're appealing, you're not appealing. Well, you can peel for any reason you want, but it's, it's really not about disagreeing with the policy. You know, you're, you'll have to, there will have to be some finding that the county aired in some way. And that could be, you know, sometimes it's procedural or inadequate, you know, inadequate findings, whatever. There can be some procedural grounds. Um, or that there's a violation of state law or a violation of our, you know, we've done something to our zoning code that violates the comprehensive plan, you know, it's it's going to have to be based in some sort of, right, analysis of how the board aired. Um, but yeah, that can, that can happen.
Okay.
And that happened with like short-term rentals, the short-term rental code.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll let them know and I'll immediately find out what, what their testimony was specifically on and what they would propose as, uh, you know, emissions of air, because that's what it would have to be based on, so.
Yeah, and then the other thing you asked, can you just appeal on part of it? It's interesting. There was some, there was a bill passed, um, like in the last session or two sessions ago that changed. There is a way now that I think it can like, it can be severed. So just sort of what you're saying that if part of it's appealed, part of it could stand. And we're going to consider that, I think in terms of how we write the findings, but what I don't know is whether, I think Luba maybe has to do that severance as opposed to, you, you know, an appellant just saying, I'm only appealing this little piece, but I'm also unclear on that. So I need to, I need to find that out because that question has come up as well.
Oh, okay. Very, very good. Um, I'll keep you in the loop. Thank you.
If, I was, uh, told, that if there are some minor changes that we, the planning commission would like to suggest to get them in before, June sixth, if possible. So, and I, those are probably fairly minor, uh, because what we passed on. But that was something that was, uh, aired to me after the hearing.
Are you talking about like the concrete pad and stuff like that?
Could be, could be something like that. Um, yeah, maybe they need hurricane ties or something, who knows? Something of that, something that we think is important. Um, but right now, you know, it, they're, it's pretty firm on RVs, so it's, you know, there were suggestions that a manufactured home could, uh, be more livable. Uh, this was, uh, Commissioner Savis, you know, who voted no, uh, against the RVs, uh, suggested that the manufactured homes are built for full-time residents, uh, and they would be a much better choice.
Especially. But they can, they can be an ADU. I mean.
And that's exactly what it would be.
So what, then it's an ADU, not an RV. Yeah, RV is for recreational, but.
Yes, exactly.
Wow.
So I don't, you know, this matter, there's sort of this procedural thing. The board didn't remand this back to the planning commission. So there's no like formal action that the planning commission would be taking on the matter. You've made your recommendation, but individually, of course, you can submit comment to the board at any time. And if you have, as you know, you're suggesting Murph some ideas, certainly you can submit them. I'm not sure procedurally how the board envisions that working exactly, but if that's what you were advised to do, then certainly you or any member of the commission can, can do that. But the planning commission itself wouldn't be taking another vote on that amendment unless the board were to remand it back at some point.
No, and that's exactly how it was, uh, conveyed to me that, yeah, it's one-on-one. So yeah, if you want to give a personal testimony or a personal idea, please don't hesitate to write a letter.
And that can always be done on the Thursday business meetings where you can have three minutes to share your ideas and concerns or whatever. So that's a weekly opportunity.
Exactly.
Yeah, for once, the only reason I voted no last time was because we, we kind of didn't even discuss the RVs, even though it was part of the staff recommendation. And I felt like we, we probably should have looked into it a little more in case the county did exactly what they did. Uh, because at least we could have considered what circumstances RVs might have been acceptable, but we didn't do that. So we'll see how it goes.
Exactly. And it's pretty tough, uh, for all the work that we put in. At least I, I can't speak for everybody, but I put a lot of time into these, uh, hearings that we have here. And then go to go ahead and put something together so I can testify for the planning commission. And to be only allotted five minutes is a really kick in the pants. Because I, as you know, I kind of sidetrack a little and if I show up with seven pages like I did, I never got past the half the second page before I was cut off. So I never was able to convey my complete, uh, description of what happened at this hearing and how we reached that me, uh, recommendation.
Can you submit that in, uh, you know, in writing and too, even though they didn't let you say it, there were seven pages? Could you submit that to them?
But I, but I didn't. I want, because I wanted face to face and I want, I was hoping for questions.
But they do get the minutes. I will say that, uh, which you have tonight, I think to review. And so they did, um, they did get those, which has the, you know, the detailed discussion and motion and all of that. That was in their packet. But their draft, you know, they were drafted, so hopefully they were close.
Okay. On minutes, does anyone have corrections?
I wasn't there, so I have no comments.
I have a few, uh, and they're mostly just, uh, typographical. Um, are you ready?
So Darcy seems to have dropped off from what I can tell, but we're recording. And she might be having problems. So Murph, if you just state what those corrections are, she'll hear them on the recording and can make the edits.
Okay, second paragraph, first page. Uh, the sentence, oh, it's about one, two, three, four, fifth sentence down, goes, uh, fine, toward the end of that sentence. Finally, there are, are minor and non-substantive, uh, amendments. It goes down to the next one. Non-substantive should have a dash between non and substantives. Second page, ten sentences down at the end, uh, hundred feet from the primary dwelling, comma, and says can be the standard, can be the only dwelling on the property besides the primary unit. Should be, cannot be the only dwelling on the primary, um, on the property. So it would read larger than nine hundred square feet, cannot be further than a hundred feet from the primary dwelling, comma, and cannot be the only dwelling on the property besides the primary dwelling.
Actually it can't, I think it should be can.
It can be.
Yeah, if you're going to have the eighty, well, there might be a better way to say it, but what, what the, um, what the provisions are, is that you, you can't have like a third dwelling. So what, what the point Martha was trying to make was that the ADU can be the only dwelling other than, I mean, it's like you, you get those two. So it shouldn't say cannot, but it, there might be a better way to phrase that. But the point is that you get to have two dwellings max. The primary dwelling and the ADU. Couldn't also have like a health hardship or something like that.
Okay, I was reading as the only dwelling on the property.
Yeah, I think it's trying to say, yeah.
Um, down on the third paragraph, number two, uh, about the fourth word end goes, we received a slightly different response. Um, should slightly actually be in there. I guess if that's what she said, I just had it underlined. Um, then the sentence down underneath it, um, she goes, a licensed vehicle with or without motive power, it should be motor power.
I think motive is a great name.
Pretty close. Then, um, third paragraph again, down, one, two, three, four, five. Uh, fifth sentence. Um, started at the fourth sentence, it goes, right now RVs are allowed as dwellings only when it's approved on some sort. Excuse me, wrong one. Let's go includes, okay, I'm starting on the fourth sentence up above includes, but is not limited to the park trailer, travel trailers, pickup campers, motorhomes, fifth wheel trailers, and camping and tent trailers. Uh, shouldn't it be camping tent trailers? Should we pull out and?
I, I don't know if she was quoting, who, who said that?
Um, it doesn't say.
Okay. I, it may, it may have been a direct quote from the code. It may not be. I don't know for sure. I'm not sure what I, I'm not sure how camping trailer really adds anything beyond all the other stuff, so.
Oh, camping tent.
Probably fine either way. Tent trailer, yeah, I definitely know what that is.
Okay. And then down, down on that same paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Ninth sentence down, it says, cut, county must applique or something, but it should say apply. So got a mis spell there. I think that was it. Nope, page five. Under Adam Boyce, Oregon City, Mr. Boyce is very interested in and supports, should be supports, the proposal, uh, sent, second sentence down, it would allow people to live there instead of where, should be where. And that's it.
So, um, Ellen very helpfully did check the state language. Thank you, Ellen. So it is motive, motive power. I agree. It's not a word we hear very often, but that, but that one's correct. Uh, and I think the other one, the can, cannot thing is correct, although possibly it could have been phrased more clearly. And the other ones all sounded like good corrections from what I could understand.
Hey, thank you. Do we have a vote on it? Anyone make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the, uh, minutes with, uh, changes as presented.
Second?
Wait, hang on. We got to take a roll call vote because, oh, sorry. Um, Darcy's not here though, so I'm going to have to figure this out. Um, so you're going to either say aye, nay, or abstain. Commissioner Moss?
Aye.
Commissioner Peterson?
Abstain.
Commissioner Pack?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopes?
Aye.
Commissioner Midda?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
And Chair Murphy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
That one a lot easier than the other motions.
We did good.
That's because I didn't have anything to say.
We like when you have things to say, Tom.
Yes, we do.
Yes, absolutely.
How are, um, uh, where, where are you in interviewing, Jennifer?
Well, that's a perfect segue to other business. Stevens, magic how that worked. Um, so we have a date, I believe. Um, there are, we're actually not interviewing till the end of Jan, of June. So June twenty-seventh, we have eight applicants, including a couple of incumbents. And yeah, so Chair Murphy, uh, and then Chair, two members of the board, uh, Chair Smith and Commissioner Scholl are doing the interviews. I will be there. Typically I just sort of, um, help, but don't really exactly participate. Um, so I don't know if Darcy's reached out yet. Tom Peterson, did you hear from her?
Yeah, I, I, I'm first.
Well, perfect. So they want to do them in person, which we haven't done in-person interviews for a few years, so.
I didn't have to do one the last time. I was kind of spoiled.
Yeah, in-person interviews at the board office, um, the afternoon of June twenty-seventh, so. Then it'll have to, they make a recommendation. It goes back to the full board. So it won't be till sometime in July that we have the, um, appointments. Um, but I will say your schedule is pretty empty right now. Um, so your next meeting is canceled because it's Memorial Day. And then, um, we don't have anything currently in June. Um, I'll have Darcy send down an email that the next thing I expect is going to be a study session. Um, and I've got a few topics sort of kicking around in my head, so I need to get with, probably with Martha Fritzy and talk through what things we think we might need to bring to you for some work that, um, she's going to be doing, uh, regarding the zoning code. That's kind of our next big project. There's going to be, um, some consultant work done and we're going to want to talk to you about what's coming with that. And then, um, potentially just some education kind of stuff on housing, um, that will eventually lead into work that the planning department will be doing, but just sort of some preparation for that. Um, so we'll try to get something on the calendar, but I don't know that that will happen in June. We might bump it out a little farther than that.
Can I ask for, uh, an update on something? Uh, maybe you can suggest or ask the um, transportation folks, but I, I don't know, three, four years ago when we were talking about fee and lieu and the sidewalk, um, you know, stitching the sidewalk together and, and there was a, there was a comment or I think somebody came from transportation once upon a time to kind of give us an update on how they're actually using the money that's being collected and
Yeah.
I'd like a quick update on that if, you know, that's feasible.
An update on how the money is being spent?
Um, you know, how much progress are we making in terms of creating additional sidewalk?
Okay.
Um, from the fee and lieu that's being collected.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just a quick comment on my part, um, I'm going to be out of the country the first two weeks in July, so. Uh, but then again, they may not be appointment, so it may not make a difference.
Well, there's an optimistic approach.
Well, you never know. I've been around a long time. They may decide it's time for some new blood, so, which is fine. Uh, but anyway, I was just going to throw that out that if you're vacillating, you have dates.
Okay.
I won't be able to make the first part of the month, so.
Okay.
Where are you going?
Uh, Portugal.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Wow, how fun.
I don't know. Is Portugal really better than a study session at the planning commission?
I don't know. I, I'll, I'll let you know when I get back. How's that?
That's fair. That's definitely fair. Uh, I don't have any other business, so.
Oh, I had a quick question, um, for Carrie before we adjourn. Um, Carrie, you mentioned that, um, you thought that some of the, it sounded like you thought that some of the, um, citizen comments were maybe not appropriate. Were you, certainly at the, our public hearing, I didn't hear anything like that. Were you speaking, uh, in regards to the written, um, testimony?
Yes.
Okay, because I looked through them and, you know, people get emotional and heated, but. I guess I didn't take offense by anything, you know.
I have, I have thin skin.
There was one comment, you know, right, uh it seemed like quote against the planning commission, but you know. People say all sorts of things, yeah, I guess it just rolls right off of me, so, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something.
I have one question to ask, Commissioner, does anybody want to volunteer for delivering the results of this? To the Board of County Commissioners on June twelfth?
I, I think you have a lot of good practice, Mur.
They know how to shut me off pretty well.
Keep it down, when three minutes is one page, so five minutes is a page and a half. Learned that at the business meetings.
Absolutely, I'll read it backwards next time.
Yeah, I, I used to use my phone and time myself, because believe you me, at three minutes, the buzzer goes off.
Well, we get five minutes, so, yeah.
Oh, well, there you go, get your five, but, yeah.
Well, some of you could come and join and give me your five minutes.
So we'll, we'll let you know, uh.
Murph, you buy the coffee and I'll come.
Okay, you're on.
There you go, I'll be there.
Well, Joy and I will let you know if the meeting date changes from June twelfth, then again, we'll be letting everybody know who's submitted testimony if that date does move. But so far, it's still on the books.
Awesome.
Joy, thank you so much, excellent.
Everybody, thank you so much, and Ellen, it's always so good to see you.
Yeah, is this our last time seeing Kevin?
Uh, well, it depends, it depends on.
How much longer we go?
I hope, I hope not, I hope you uh, I hope I'll be interviewing you again.
Uh, there, there might be other committees, I mean, I, at this rate, I, maybe I can join Tom in Portugal.
It's gonna be interesting, we're taking the whole family, including our. Grandchild will be ten months.
Oh, wow.
So it'll be an interesting experience, so, but, but yeah, but where the whole family's going, we bought a place in Porto for, at an auction. Last year, so.
Oh, my gosh.
Hang out in Porto for five days and then Lisbon for a while and Barcelona for a while, so that should be fun.
And what is this grandchild, boy or girl?
Well, uh, my uh. Uh, I don't know. They're, they're raising the child, um what's the term they're using, um. I don't want to say gender neutral.
Non-binary.
Yeah, so um, so yeah, my, my daughter is non-binary and her partner. They wa- they chose to uh raise the child this way, so we don't know yet.
And what, what is the name they chose?
It's, it's a made-up name, the, the baby's name is O C. Ocean. Uh, well, it's actually O C Day, but you, they go by O C. And um, middle name is Ryan, after the constellation of Orion.
Wow.
Um, but it's a beautiful baby, it's uh just a hoot to be around and. At some point, the child will decide what gender they want to be.
There you go, congratulations, that's really exciting, congratulations.
Yeah.
For long-distance traveling with a ten-month-old, you don't have to prove your courage in any other way, Tom. That's, that's great.
Yeah, well, we, we were, we were, we talked to some friends that went to Europe last year with a. Uh, an infant still, and, and it went fairly well, once they get their wheels and they're walking. I don't even think you want to go there, so we're thinking it's, it may work, we'll see, but it, it may dampen. Some of the plans a bit, I pres- I'm, I'm sure, so we'll see, but it'll be fun.
So Tom, are you on the coast?
No, I, I just didn't turn the lights on in the, in the bedroom, I mean, and so the only light is, I have this little light in my. Above my computer, so that's why I look so hazy.
Well, I actually meant in Portugal.
No, well, Lisbon's on the coast.
Okay.
Um, Porto, Porto's on the river and, okay, Barso- Barcelona's on the coast, Mediterranean, so it'll be on. Atlantic for a while and the Mediterranean for a while, so.
It, you know, they have the hundred-foot wave in Portugal.
Right, but we're not there for the right time of year for that, uh yeah, that's just, that's in between, it's just north. Uh, between um Lisbon and uh Porto, I know where it is, the beach town, big surfing town, but it was not the right season for the big waves. So.
Yeah.
So we just have to contend with, with drinking the Porto wine and pretend we're watching Big Wave.
All right, Chair Murphy, I need to let Joy go, go home, she's already home, but I need to let her actually be home, so.
Bye, everyone.
Talk to you all soon.
Thank you, everybody.
Take care, bye.